I move that we approve the agenda.
Okay, you have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any conflicts of interest anyone want to declare tonight?
I have a conflict with number six and I'll be stepping down.
So we get to item number six. What's your plan? Is it just step down while we have discussion?
Yeah, I'll be down in the audience.
Okay, got it. Okay. No other conflicts of interest. We're gonna go ahead and move into our period of public comment. There are three administrative discussion decisions on the agenda tonight. So this is, there's nothing that calls for a public hearing. So what that means in real language for the public is that this is your opportunity to come up to the podium and speak about anything that's on our agenda for tonight. Again, there won't be any time set aside when we discuss about that to do that. So if you do have any comments, good or bad, about anything in the county, now is the time to come up. I just ask you to state your name for the record.
I was here last month.
Yeah, just, if you could keep the microphone close to your mouth, just as a reminder, we are being recorded tonight. So we've got video and an audio recording of the whole public meeting.
I'm really a loud person. So that's why I was trying to...
Oh, gotcha.
I try not to be, but I am. My way of being. I'm grateful for this opportunity to share a few of our thoughts. My name is Susanna Char. I have lived in Peterson for forty, over forty years along with my family. I have seen many changes coming to our rural community in recent years, and many of them concern me and our family and our community. I'm here today in behalf of that community, family, friends, and especially in behalf of my husband, Douglas Char, who doesn't have a voice anymore since recently he passed away. He was born in Peterson and lived there most of his life. His family was one of the original home stayers of that part of our county. A member of a community upon hearing that I was coming to this meeting tonight to bring a family's input, like you asked on the flyers that we receive in our homes, and how all this development is going to affect us, said, "After all, it's their land anyway." We are totally aware that it's true. Recently, the Sessions family purchased the land from the Bowman family, and they are requesting to develop it. The land borders our family land, so we have a great interest and a great impact on this decision. Nobody denies their rights. In fact, we've known each other many, many years. We love their children, their family, but the concern comes also about the right of the rest of our community and our quality of life. Now that we try to stop progress, but we want to see what type of impact all our communities in our county will continue to have with all the different developments that are being proposed. What is the impact in five years, in ten years, in thirty years? What type of infrastructure will be required to support and maintain the integrity of roads that are already with the influx of traffic on our area in a really bad shape? In our case, one of the greatest concern for our family and for me is the fact that Peterson is a dead end. We are very concerned having not only the river so close as part of the infrastructure around us, but if we were to have a natural disaster, let's say possible floods, like in other parts of our country, fires recently in California, and one thing that also concerns my husband a lot and others is the also we have the proximity of the railroad really close to us along with the river. If we were to have a chemical spill, not only we would be affected by being in a dead end road, but all the members in our community will be trapped. And the reason why I feel that way is some years ago, there was a fire between our neighbor and us. There was a Fourth of July event where they were having fireworks. And as that happened, they didn't realize under some sagebrush or some bushes, there was some fire practice. And when everybody left, we, our house is a low cabin, and their house has wood also. I so happened to have a hose nearby between both houses. And all of a sudden, I noticed that we had a fire coming, and I'm glad that I was there to prevent. By the time that we had the fire track from Morgan, the road with one of the fire tracks was taken over. There was no way that any traffic could go one way or another. Our roads are in really bad shape, but are also narrow. So if something were happening like that, and not there, I'm trying to scare the ball, but it's a reality, it's a possibility. So my question today is, what is the, what is the words? All of a sudden, do we have a master development plan for, like Peterson and many other areas? Because I was here last meeting when you had the other case presented from Deep Creek. And it sounded to me they were similar concerns and issues with them and with us about the road and the condition and being almost no way out. We don't have a way out. And it was mentioned, Mr. Rose, you questioned about maybe having a traffic study or some type of study that will look in different areas of our county. So then again, I understand that everybody has rights, but also the rest of the community has the right to see improvement for everybody, for the benefit of everybody. It's like, I don't know why, for some reason, as I was coming, this hymn or song that we love so much, it says, "This is my land. This is your land." It says our land, but more important, it's our children's land. And the decisions that we make also affects the well itself. So I feel like there has to be more concern or more study on a development, on a plan that can oversee all this unbelievable growth that we're having all over our county, but also in Peterson right now. We have the other case that you and I are gonna discuss tonight, but it's development area. So I'm grateful for this chance you gave me.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Just a note, I'm not sure if it is affected...
Your name, ma'am?
Helen Mount Green. Item number eight and nine. There is a moratorium on applications within the Highlands Water District. I'm not sure of any legal things that have gone off. At the last time I knew, they were within that water district. I don't know what's gone on since then, but I know that moratorium's in existence. I know that hasn't been lifted. I just had a question about that since there's not a public hearing. I'll throw it out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. No one else. We're gonna move out of public comment, and we're going to move on to item number six on our agenda.
Okay. So the application before you is, the owners are Debbie and Randy Sessions, requesting approval of the Circle S subdivision. It's a small three-lot subdivision in the Peterson area. Staff has reviewed the plots according to our preliminary and final plat ordinance, and we have come up with a few conditions. So as you can see, the recommendations for are from staff. Of course, one and four are pretty straightforward. The two conditions that we have requested that you consider tonight is, the applicant is to add a plat note that states, prior to issuance of a building permit, installation of the access easement shall be installed by the developer in compliance with the standards set forth in Morgan County Code 81244Q, one, A through D, and two and five, two through five. And that's the access easement ordinance. The application was submitted and approved as far as county set goals with that ordinance that was in effect back, that was approved and then removed in 2017. So it was approved in 2015, and then an access easement ordinance was written for the subdivision ordinance specifically. But this subdivision was, concept was approved prior to that ordinance being adopted. So our code does allow them to get a final plat, final plat recorded upon approval from the planning commission, and then they can, they have to install the road prior to a building permit. So our code does allow them to do that. A building permit will not be issued unless that access has been installed and approved by the county engineer. A maintenance agreement and easements for the shared well and the access easement shall be recorded at the time of final plat recreation. So the applicant is putting in a shared well. We do have a letter from the health department stating that that is, the determination is okay, so long as they follow their standards, which is exactly what number three is requiring prior to a building permit again. So with that, the applicant is here. They meet all of the other requirements of our code for a small subdivision. Obviously, Debbie is here to answer, and Randy, I believe, is there, to answer any questions that you may have. The staff is recommending approval of this subdivision. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, just for everybody's benefit, can you just walk us through the basic process here? So what's the current zoning on this?
So the current zoning is RR5. That was done a few years ago. A rezon was done, I think, about fifteen, something like that, a rezon of the property. The village low density, or the general plan is village low density. And so they could have actually further rezoned it to a higher density, but they chose not to, to keep that rural fill of the land. So there's only three lots that they're going to be putting on here. So one is like nine acres, approximately 9.28 acres. There's one that's 1.25, and one that is 5.5. The soils, according to the health department, is what will determine that, is the layout of that as well. And so with their protest, that's what they have chosen to do, is just three lots. But as far as zoning goes, they could have gone more dense.
They could have done...
They could have done R120 with that zone.
R120?
However, they chose not to do that.
How many homes would that have been?
On the sixteen acres?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two homes back in there with the current zoning. And that's the thing with the Peterson area. Is there a zoning map? Did I not put one on there? I think it's, oh, there it is, that one. So the zoning map, you can see that the general plan, and I guess I didn't include that in here, so I apologize, is what? Yeah, this is existing zoning. But this R120, this is the town center, according to the Peterson area plan, is this little section right here, this little bubble. And so, and I think it goes all the way back to this mountain line bridge right here, McCanal.
What does the future land use have that area as then?
R120, village low density.
Village low density, R120.
And some commercial. So they do have commercial here and commercial here on the general plan, as well as over on this little section here. But as far as the village, village low density is the, is the general plan designation. And so they could have rezoned it to a higher density of R120, but they chose not to. They went with a less dense zone.
So, and I can ask the applicant as well, but there, there's, actually, I'll just wait. I'll ask the applicant since they're out there. Any questions for staff?
No, I just, I would just be curious to see the actual outlay of the village dent, village boundaries.
The future land use?
It doesn't have to be land, it can be this one.
So the property is right here.
So all that yellow is...
All that yellow is village low density. So it goes to the, about the end of their property there. Where's it, this, this pop of trees? Where's it, okay. So it does include RR5, or ranch residential 5, so the zoning is appropriate for the area. And that's something to point out, and that's, that's the, this is the way that the general plan, their area plans were written, was to include this area here as, as a village. And so where the concentration of their development is what they want it. Doesn't mean that it will be like that. It's how the general plan was written.
Right. That's the vision, I guess, of the, of the future land use. One more quick question, because the question was raised about roads and fire regress, so...
Right. And the fire chief has passed off on the subdivision. So, I mean, they didn't raise any concerns regarding the roads. It's a public road, and it meets the width as far as a sixty-foot right-of-way, as far as 3,800 goes. And they, the road that they will be putting in down here, sorry, the road that they will be putting in down here is gonna be a private, a private road, private access. So that, they have to have a maintenance agreement and all of that for the maintenance of that road. So the county won't be even maintaining that road at all. It'll be road base in twenty-six feet wide, twenty-foot approved surface.
Whatever our standards are for private...
To support a fire apparatus. They do on their plat have a turnaround. The fire department would probably require them to do that. So the applicants are required to get approval from the fire department, and they establish, they follow the fire code rules in, in the development process. So, yeah, they will have to put, and that is sufficient according to fire code.
Okay. Well, so what would be the next step after subdivision? If they wanted to build on that, then that goes to...
So if they, if someone comes in, so they can go and record, and then if someone comes in and, say they sell lot two, in order to, or even lot one, they will have to improve, make that, those improvements prior to our office issuing a building permit. So that will have to be reviewed and inspected according to their construction documents that they will submit to our county engineer, and he would do the compaction tests, or he would review that and inspect that, that improvement.
Is that the whole road, or just enough to access?
The whole road, the whole access. That's what our code states, is that, that the improvements will have to be put in prior to an issuance of a building permit. And because it is an access easement, it's not a private road, public road, anything like that, they, they can record and sell lots, and when somebody builds, requests a building permit, that's when you address it.
I'm curious, they're sharing wells. How many of the lots are sharing?
All three of them. We'll share one well. I don't know, the well on the preliminary, the well is back in here, or, oh, is it back further? There it is, sorry.
So is the well already there?
And they will, no.
That's just a proposed spot.
And not the other one, yeah. They could start drilling there and not find water and have to go somewhere else on the lot. And that's, that would be approved through the state and health department. I'll let Sessions answer any further questions unless you have more for staff.
Anything else? Could I ask her something? Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yep.
As far as the shared well, we could have drilled wells, individual wells, but the fewer wells into the aquifer, the less chance of pollution contamination. So we felt it was better just to do the one well and to share it rather than each lot have its well. And again, like Gina said, the master plan recommended the half-acre zoning. We chose just to keep it more rural with the five-acre zone and have the three lots. Do you have any...
Any concerns, questions?
Not, I don't really have any. I'm just curious, Debbie, on the well, what it, what is, on preliminary stage, you know more than I do about this, what is required as far as showing water on that?
We had to do a test well and log it, but it, Dr. Bronner, the one thing, I've appreciated working with staff. They've been really good to work with. I've come, I've noticed things in a code that are not clear, and there's, it says that the code doesn't actually say that. And we've had disagreements, but I always, I gave them a good fight, but then I would defer to their interpretation. For example, the code requires a test well. And Roland and I, Roland Haseman and I have had this discussion, the test well really should be at the depth that the culinary well needs to be, at 100 feet. Just because you can find water at 10 feet doesn't mean there's gonna be water at 100 feet. But the code doesn't say the test well has to be at 100 feet. It just says a test well. So there's been quite a few items in the code that are kind of like that, that we probably need more clarification or have it say exactly what we think it says. So we did a little test, test well, and that was all that was required.
So how deep was the test well?
I think about 10 feet.
Is that what Mark means on here? I don't think the eight-foot well log, what's that have reference to? I'm confused on that, on Mark Millers. So it's on page, let's see.
On page...
It's with his memorandum.
The other, the other thing is, the well doesn't work out. If the well doesn't work out, we still have an option to go to, well, the water company, well, water for them, I don't know if it's in Peterson pipeline, but they were kind of slow. So we decided to make the application for a well.
And it, it met the minimum flow requirements for the three lots, if that's what you're asking?
With the test hole?
Uh-huh.
But it almost, to me, it'd have to meet that once the well's approved too, right?
Oh, absolutely.
That'd be the final.
Yeah.
Right.
That would be Morgan Weaver.
But it met the minimum flow rate for the three lots. But again...
Yeah, either 10 feet versus 100.
Right.
Then the other issue that comes up is water rights. We have irrigation water rights that can be transferred into the well, or we could put Weaver Basin water into the well. Because, I mean, we're current to farm in that, we've got, we've got water rights for the, for the ground, so that...
That is tied to the ground.
Tied to the ground, so it can be converted to a well, so...
Is there enough up on the front lot with the septic then, and all that to work?
Yes, because of the shared well, yep.
Yeah.
Weaver-Morgan Health passed on that one.
That'd be the only way you could do it.
Yep.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Remind me of the condition again, I was on easement.
So let's go back to page, page of the conditions on here.
On page one, going on to page two, the conditions.
Yeah, so the, for the easement and maintenance agreement and easements for the shared well and the access easement, as, as approved by the Weaver-Morgan Health Department and the Morgan County Planning and Development Services shall be recorded at the time of final plat. So they just have to, that's the condition, that they're gonna record that at final?
The easement-maintenance agreement has already been recorded.
So it's just the actual easement itself on the final? Is that what their condition is?
No, that an agreement, maintenance agreement be recorded. We've already done that part. We just haven't recorded the one on the well. We have, we haven't drawn up. We just haven't recorded it.
So the access easement, not the shared well portion of it?
Yes.
So that would be fine, to leave that condition in as it is? So can they do that with just doing the test well record on the final, or is it have to wait till the well's actually drilled?
This is just the agreement. This is just the agreement of the shared well, that the, how they're gonna share expenses.
Go to building permit. That's the way our code reads. Can I answer your question, see, the conditions?
Yeah, I just, I was, if I had to make the motion, I just wanted to know where it was at, so I'm still not clearly right.
Yeah. So for the well, the paperwork needs to be done prior to final recreation on the well.
Right. So that condition is still valid, as written?
Right. Right. As far as, yeah.
The actual well, yeah.
Did I say that wrong?
The agreement.
The agreement, yeah.
The well agreement.
The well agreement is what's left. So sample motions are on the last page of this version of it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move we approve the Circle S small division application number seventeen dot zero three two, located at approximately 4475 North 3,800 Weston Peterson, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated March 14th, 2019.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so for item number seven, we're just gonna...
Woody Earth State. So we didn't get, we got all of the notices that were within 1,000 feet of the project back. The addresses were wrong, and we failed to double-check that. So we have to... So we have to re-notice it. So the neighbors of the, of that property will receive proper notice.
Okay.
So it has been noticed in, on the property and the notices have been, or we will send the notices out on Monday for the twenty eighth.
Okay.
If we get them, because we haven't received them today, they have until probably about four o'clock when they can be postmarked for Monday, to be gone, to, to go out Monday. So that is why we have, that's why we need to postpone.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion on that, on number seven?
That we postpone it?
Yeah, twenty eighth.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we postpone item number seven till our meeting on March twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Okay, do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number eight.
Okay, item number eight. It is a, an application for a concept plan submitted by Sotterby, Mr. and Mr. Dwayne and Wayne Johnson for the development, part of the development of the Mountain Green Village Development Agreement. So this is a concept plan, just to let, to get it out there and, and approve that this is what they are doing. It is, it does sit right behind the bank, just to make note that they did have an application for this nine acres, it was not in the development agreement.
Right.
Just to make that clear, that this is not where they're building apartments. They are building the apartments in, within the development agreement that's already been approved by the county.
When, when was that, just remind me?
That was in, wash, you asked me.
Okay, long time ago.
Twenty twelve, thirteen.
Thirteen was the one I think it was recorded.
Okay.
After all of the things that went on with that.
Okay.
So, the.
So this is an existing development agreement?
Correct.
But very similar around Valley in that the development agreement was already in place, now they're coming forward with their next step, which is concept?
Right, for multi-family.
Okay.
So in the development agreement, within the development agreement, they are allowed so much residential multi-plant, a mix of multi-family and multi-family, single and detached, or attached and detached, single family homes as well as multi-family apartments. And so that is what this application is for. It is for eight hu, a hundred and eight units. That is one thing, you, you got a memo before the meeting started that has two changes that we would like to add to the conditions. So there's, there's a few conditions that we need to add to it. Of course, there's, there's just some minor things that we found within the development agreement, the CD, the zoning is CD, which is the central development, or central district, central commercial, yeah, central district.
Central district.
Or commercial.
Commercial.
Central, central commercial district or something like that. We no longer have that zone. And so what, the, the development agreement was approved under that zone. And so all of the, what is in the development agreement pretty much has already mimicked what the zone requires within that, because they had to, they had to write that development agreement to match that CD zone, that's what the whole purpose of that CD zone was for. And so the, the development agreement is what supersedes that because it's already been approved from that, that zoning district. And so they have met, according to this concept plan, they have met all of the requirements except for the lot number eight on your memo. You will look at that. There's a couple of things, like I said, it's just, it's minor things, they need to obtain a conditional use permit F for the development agreement and the CD zone. They didn't indicate on their plat, not to the plat. They didn't, they didn't indicate on their plat where the geologic hazard soils are, if any. They still have to be indicated on the plat and so for a concept plan, so they'll need to do that. And then when they come in for concept, obviously we're going to go through a lot more detail with the subdivision and go line by line. I read through the development agreement, everything pretty much matches except for there's a couple issues. So one is the, the number of units. They are allowed in the development agreement, six point nine acres for multi-family, that's how it's illustrated within the development agreement. And they're only allowed according to the CD zone and the development agreement, and it states very clearly in, in the development agreement that they are allowed sixteen units per acre for multi-family. And so this concept plan is actually six point five acres, six point five three, which puts that at a, at about sixteen and a half acres, or sixteen and a half units per acre. And so they'll just have to move their, their property lines a bit in order to compensate for that extra half an acre to make the hundred and eight units work. And they have the room to do that. The other issue, which is number seven, that we've added to the memo of a condition, is recently they have sold property to UDOT and the UDOT, and I don't know, they'll have to verify this information, we don't know where those boundaries are. We have looked at, we don't have that, I didn't bring that down. It's just this little corner where, if you can put it to the other plat, it's just this little corner right here. The, the corridor comes from the inner, from the interchange, possible interchange could come from the rest off and go this way and it kind of cuts that corner there and then winds up with Travers Loop. And so with that alignment, they'll need to make sure that that is, that this parcel is aligns with that. I don't know what property it is that they had sold or, or any of that. So I do know that UDOT has purchased the London, Lundin property. And so we just want to make sure that this is not going to cause any problems later down the road. So we want them to address that now and that's the whole purpose of the concept plan. So those are the two that we have asked them, we have added to the, to the plat, the conditions of approval, sorry. But according to the development agreement and the CD zone, this subdivision does meet all of those requirements except for those two things. So as far as water goes, I know there was a member of the community that's concerned about that and the fact that, that this subdivision is within the Highlands Water District, but it's also within the Cottonwoods Mutual Water District. And so mutual water boundaries and therefore Cottonwood Mutual Water has supplied a letter of intent for this subdivision. So they will, they'll, again, this is all going to be, that's all that's required at the concept plan. And so they will, they are saying that they're going to get water from Cottonwood Mutual Water for this development. There's nothing in the development agreement that states that they have to get it from Highlands Water and, and we understand that it is within the Highlands Water District. We also have in the Cottonwood Mutual Water District. So that's where the, the conflict lies, but they do have a latest statement from Cottonwood Mutual Water.
What does the, what's the temporary land use ordinance say?
Temporary land use?
Yeah, the moratorium.
Within the Highlands Water District. And I don't remember all of the language on that.
Does it say no concept will be approved or no building permit?
No land use applications or building permits.
So is this a land use application?
Yeah, it is. But water is not a requirement for the concept plan approval. So we did not want to withhold this because of something that really didn't have an impact on.
Sir?
So water is a requirement that has to be shown at preliminary plat?
Right, so remind, remind everybody again what concept is that? So this is an existing development agreement, although the developer can't move on to the next stage until they have a concept plan?
Really, they, they could have gone to preliminary according to their development agreement because they already have a concept within the development agreement.
But preliminary requires water.
Preliminary requires water. However, we felt that it was important that we go through this stage so that we can talk about these things. And I mean, this development agreement is, is a big one and there's, you know, the, the county needs to be aware of what, what they're doing and, and the applicant and staff felt that, that this was a good place to start. And so again, the preliminary plat is going to be the next step after this and that's where everything is going to get fleshed out. All of the water, the roads, the access.
Parcel lines.
Parcel lines, all of, all of those things, although parcel lines within a concept plan need to be pretty much.
Pretty close.
Close, and that's why we've put in these requirements to make sure that the UDOT property is addressed. And so that will have to be done before they apply for preliminary plat.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a map that shows the exact boundaries of the Highlands Water Service District? Or no, is it just a general?
We don't, we don't have one. Highlands hasn't ever.
Yes, we have that. I mean, we don't have it.
No, no, but you, you have an actual one that we can see. So does that need to be addressed to re, because the moratorium says within the district, even though Highlands isn't going to service them, the moratorium does say to any land use application within their service area boundaries, how do we work around that?
I understand the concern and, and there is that, this is a definite gray area. It is also in the Cottonwood Water. It has nothing, it could easily circumvent, not use Highlands at all. I don't think that was the intent of the moratorium to prevent any development that may fall in that outer boundary. This, as water districts go, it's involved. So, and water's not required to be proven in a concept.
Right, I, I understand that.
If this is a concept that works.
No, I, I agree. We just have the, that moratorium and it's about due to be up, is in the six months? About up?
Yeah, it's getting close.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I had a question, if I may. Do you know, in the last couple of developments we've talked about, when we passed the concept, when it's come up for preliminary, the discussion has been that we've invested those people with certain rights. So if we approve this concept tonight, is the conversation going to turn at the preliminary stage? We can't really deny this because we've given them a concept approval and now we've got to give them the water, the rights to the water or at least approve it if they can get it.
They have to prove it. Again, this is, this, the rights for this particular property have already been established and approved by the, by the council through the development agreement. So they're guaranteed those six and a, six point nine acres of multi-family regardless if we approve this concept or not. And, and they, if we deny it, they could bring back the preliminary. And so, I mean, ultimately, this is, this is why we did the concept, so we could have this discussion. However, the development agreement already nails that down and says, this is what this develop, this area is allowed to do and going forward. So that, that's why we have chosen to do the concept, whether you approve it or not, I mean.
It's a matter of.
What's the, what, yeah.
It's a matter of an administrative function.
Check the boxes.
And the, the reasons for that, that denial, you would have to definitely state and it actually states that in the development agreement. You have to have, I mean, it's a big process to deny an application for this development agreement. So, I mean, it's a letter, it's a stating the factual information as to why it would get denied and that type of thing. And with water, because it is that concept and it's not required to, you know, it's just a statement, that's, that's why.
I don't, I'm not talking about denial at all, I'm just asking.
Well, yeah.
The proof of water at a concept.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're just, we're asking the, the questions so we, so we're very clear.
Absolutely, that's what this is for.
When I, when I look in the, the code for concept, here's, here's our check, our checklist. A proposed name of the subdivision, check. A vicinity plan showing significant natural amendment features, check. A proposed lot and street layout along with locations of existing streets, check. Availability and location of utilities, drainage, check. Flood plain stuff. Total acreage of the entire tract proposed for subdivision, although there's a condition for that one. County plat met with aerial photo, check. Public and private easements located on the property. Location and description of existing vegetation, soils and geologic unit information indicating soils and unit types. Delineation of any areas of slope, electronic copies of all drawings and a statement of proposed water source and sewage disposal method. So my, my concern was, are we doing something drastic by changing these parcel lines, but it's not a requirement of the concept, so. And again, I just say that a lot for my own benefit, I just get to participate in my, my own.
Right.
Conversations.
And that is what the planning commission is.
Yeah.
Is tasked at doing is making sure that staff has gone through that and, and checked all those boxes as well. So asking those questions is, it's good and we need to make sure we, we can address those and that we have addressed them, so.
So when they come back to preliminary, there's one, there's what, two, two or three things that they need to bring on that?
Yeah, well, before, before.
Before preliminary, right.
Correct.
Okay. That's what we're saying with our conditions.
Correct.
Okay.
Again, this is a recommendation to the county council.
Right.
So your review of it is, is necessary to move forward.
Right, so they would make the final decision if there was anything that didn't necessarily agree with the moratorium? Temporary land use authority? Ordinance, temporary land use ordinance. Any questions?
No.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Where are you guys at?
You ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Are you going to have the applicant speak?
Um, they, uh.
We're good.
Yeah, they, unless you've got something to add that you feel.
I don't know.
Brayden, right?
Yeah.
Brayden is here, he's representing the Johnsons tonight, so if he, I don't know if he has anything to say, but.
Do you have, do you guys have any questions for the applicant? We certainly want to give him an opportunity.
I can, I can attempt to answer your question.
Shane, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, we're ready.
Mr. Chair, I move we forward a positive recommendation of approval to the county council for the Mountain Green Apartments as part of the Mountain Green Village Development Agreement, application nineteen point zero zero two located at approximately forty-nine eighty-five West Old Highway Road. Based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff memo dated March fourteenth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Item number nine.
So the next application is for a plat amendment of a Highlands addition number six subdivision. You'll notice that this is in the Highlands and it is taking in lot two oh, two oh seven, which is this one down here, and lot two oh eight. The applicant, Mr. Parsons, has requested that, he has purchased all three parcels. This extra one up here is just a remnant parcel, it does not need zoning, nor does it have access. And so the previous property owners have just been, they, they just had it. And so what he wants to do is he want, he wants to add all three of these pieces together to make one piece of lot within the Highlands number six subdivision. Everything complies with the plat, the requirements of the code, we reviewed it against the preliminary plat as well as the final plat requirements within the subdivision code. There are no soils that raise any questions in this area. Also, they're not creating an additional building lot, they're actually removing a building lot. And so. And so, this will not create anything that will require an additional study, because the residence is already existing, and there will not be an opportunity for him to build another residence without subdividing it after putting them together. So, water is not a concern, because the single-family residence then is currently there, has water. In fact, it's making it less dense. So, with that, with the flats that have been submitted and the requests, everything meets the current code that it requires to meet. So, I think staff has remembered how to approve all this application. This is the, this is the original plat. You'll notice that this little section is not within the subdivision. And so that is what triggers the preliminary and final plat. They have to do that process in order to add that in and combine the two pieces.
Just cleaning it up.
Yep. And just to make a note, Gordon Creed does run through this area, this portion of land. It's not in the floodplain. And the engineering has said that it's fine, there's no issues there. The applicant is here.
Why is this C2? That's my first question.
What's that?
Why is this C2? It seems like a staff.
It requires.
Okay. Any questions, staff?
Sir, anybody else that has a, say like an HOA, because it is changing the subdivision boundary?
They, the Highlands addition subdivisions, there's, I think, six of them total? I think this was the last one. None of them have an HOA or a development agreement or anything like that. It proceeds that ordinance.
I think there is an HOA, the original, but it's defunct.
Yeah, I think it was like.
I don't think it.
I think it defunct before six was even subdivided.
No, no open space concerns.
Right.
By bringing in, that's a great question.
Oh, is there? Oh.
What was that?
Is it active?
I was told that there wasn't.
There is not an active HOA board, but the CCNRs are enforceable.
Oh, I did not know that.
By someone.
Thank you.
Do we have any actual questions on that? Is that?
No.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, the HOA would not have anything to do with this plat amendment.
Right.
So there's.
It doesn't involve open.
It doesn't involve.
They don't have open space.
That was, I think that was our concern.
You're not taking anything away.
Yeah, we're not taking anything from a period of.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay.
I'll make.
I have a question. I am the applicant.
Oh, yes, absolutely, good. Come on up.
It surprised me there's an HOA in there, because I was told what a property was, let me enjoy it, so. Would you ask the line if there is an HOA?
What's that?
State.
Sorry, what?
Brad Parsons.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, just, if you could just talk to us, and we'll help you.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, in the disclosure of the real estate, everything that I did, there was no HOA. I mean, it was actually in the agreement itself. There was no active HOA or HOA covenants that we were to abide by.
Interesting. So, is that something that he can get with staff after this to?
It would be recorded.
Yeah.
And I have asked on Highlands for recorded CCNRs, and I haven't been able to get any from the recorder's office, unless there, would have to ask the recorder's office again.
And additionally, more to the point, covenants and CCNRs.
Are separate from HOA.
Are between the property owners.
Right.
The county is separate from that, we are meeting our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
They're kind of two different sets of rules. That, you might be in conflict with those, I don't know, we don't, that's not part of our authority to review.
That would be a civil action.
That would, that's for them and the.
But you might want to get with, listen, yeah.
You could have a recorder.
I could go to the recorder's offices and find that out, that's not an issue. I have one question on this, because the reason we're doing this is this property or this house has a two-car garage. And I was going to build an outbuilding on the other property, but obviously I could not, because it was done for a single-family home. So that's why we basically made it as one lot. And my question is to you, because my wife has brought this up since then, is if we were to build an outbuilding with a small one-bedroom apartment in the back of it, is that now considered a single-family dwelling? Or are we able to do that by combining this into a lot?
Those are, those are questions I think you should get with staff about after this application.
Okay, okay.
It's a great question, it's just not, we're not, we're not the experts, and we like to stay focused on what you've applied for. You've applied for a plat, I mean, lot line adjustments.
No problem. That's what I had to bring up. Thank you very much for your time.
Absolutely. Any other questions for us? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move we recommend approval to the county council for the Highlands addition number six subdivision plat amendment. Application 19.004, located approximately 5745 Spruce Circle. Based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated March 14th, 2019.
Okay, motion, we have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now for the really good stuff, business and staff questions. Onto item number 10, business and staff questions. Any questions for staff? Debbie had a question about training.
No, I completed my training. Did I email you the certificate? Okay.
Did you get mine too?
I got yours too. We will.
It's basically me that hasn't.
First in here. What the heck?
New leaf.
There you go. Got goals.
I went to the Land Use 101.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, so I got the certificate for that, if you need that.
I was.
Okay.
No, that's awesome. Did you, was it valuable?
It was valuable, it was good.
Good.
Yeah.
Where was that one in Sandy?
It was in Sandy, and then it was broadcast to St. George.
Folks, we're still, we're still in a public meeting. We're having a discussion here, so if you guys could, if you have private discussions, just ask that you go outside. Thank you, appreciate it. So, anyway, who's in Sandy?
Yeah, that's where the main headquarters was. Then it was broadcast into Vernal, St. George, Price, Logan, and lots of places.
Did you, who, did you meet, who was, who was the main speaker down there?
Meg Ryan.
Meg Ryan?
Not that Meg Ryan.
She's our authority.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Brett Bateman, was Brett Bateman there?
The ombudsman.
The ombudsman?
I don't know, I keep finding.
You would have, yeah, you would have.
So focused on the material.
That's right.
Well, it's just, part of the culture is meeting Brett Bateman, and obviously Meg Ryan, and, cool. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad that you were able to do that. I think it's helpful, because we, this is a lot different than your first meeting. We've got a lot of accusations to go through, and it kind of gets repetitive and administrative in nature, so that's cool. Still need to, this is our first meeting of March, so this is typically where we would elect our chair and vice chair. However, we still haven't completed that loop with a couple of people that need to be appointed with the county council. So are we going to do that, any chance, is it too late to give that on the agenda for Tuesday?
No, that's too late.
Yeah, too late.
Second of May, April.
So say that.
Who's the chair of the county council? Is there anything we could do to?
Got rules.
There's rules. It's kind of important, because we're.
Can we have a special privilege?
What's the problem?
We're not appointed, yeah.
But why do we have to wait?
Um.
Don't worry about it.
Well, you, you may not want to vote on a parent of vice chair, there may not be here, they don't appoint them.
Okay, so what's your question as far as?
We haven't been, we have two, two members of the planning commission have not been appointed yet by the county council.
Which one is it?
Because the opportunity, yeah, sorry, it's.
You and him.
Oh, it was us two, yeah.
Me?
Is that because your terms expired? Is that what?
Yeah.
So how come none of it hasn't been?
I was going to say, but then you came up.
Okay, so that is.
So the planning commission did, we did not receive any additional applications, and we did not get that memo to the county council to get those appointments done. So we'll have to do that with them on our April meeting.
And we were asking if there was any special privileges that we could get this done, so that our next meeting, we could finalize this.
But it's.
But too late.
So that's what the problem is, is because we've got to redo the chair, and you're not.
Right.
What's that?
We'll address it on Tuesday.
Okay. That'd be great, thank you. So should we be getting paid overtime? What's that? Should we be getting paid overtime, those of us who are? I, I think we're just on our own good graces to be here.
See, you may over there, you don't get anything. Or you volunteer.
No, actually, our, I don't know if it's code or bylaws, we've had this discussion before, or maybe it's even Utah code. If you, if you're appointed to a position, in the lapse, you continue your appointment until an action is taken, one way or the other. That's what I learned on the sewer board, that wasn't just for special improvement districts. I think that was for all, under the county election, or, excuse me, under Utah elections and appointed bodies. So I think, I think that's the way it goes. I hope it is, because we've done that in the past, and it was fine.
Yeah, I was hoping to have a discussion on the bylaws on the 28th, and then do the elections.
Okay.
So kind of do business on that part.
So we'll just status quo until we get to that meeting. Just to be clear, everybody's still appointed until some other action by the county council.
You both said you're willing to stay on, and there's no one that's applied, so I think we're pretty clear.
They haven't got rid of you yet, seriously.
They haven't got rid of them yet, so they're safe.
So having said that, do we do elections tonight? Is that, what would you do?
Or wait.
I'm asking.
It's not agenda either.
Chair Haslam. It's, yeah, you're right, it's not even agenda, so, never mind, disregard it.
What's on your election calendar?
Yeah, it's on the agenda. Okay, so we'll get that agenda and sort it out, and we'll just clean it up next, on the 28th. Okay. Clear as mud.
We'll take care of a lot of that business on, with the bylaws.
Outstanding. Thanks, thanks for your support on that, appreciate it.
The only other thing I wanted to say is that we did receive the application for the one that says it's ranch.
Okay.
Large binder. We'll begin staff, we've begun the staff reviews of it. And then we're going to send it out for referrals for 30 days. We are talking, we would like to, I discussed it with the planning consultants, going to manage that project and do the bulk of the work. And we've outlined a schedule that would put us with planning commission meetings in June, July, maybe. They were hoping to have, maybe we're planning for two meetings, actual public hearings, and then August.
At the planning, at the planning commission. Okay.
So, I mean, it would go as a resort special district application, and we're planning for you to have two meetings in case you need to continue it, because it is a complex, large project. And then the county council in August. Let's see. Additionally, we thought it would be good to have a work session in May, maybe April, late April, for staff just to present, here's the application. Because it's such a large project, affects so much more than county, that we could have a presentation, a work session, discussion, so we just talk about it. And we don't have to be on the record, it doesn't have to be a public hearing, we can take public comments, we can answer questions. So that everybody has a chance to deal with it. That's a little out of the box, I hope. And we were discussing, and I wanted to ask you guys about it, if what your thoughts were, whether that was necessary and beneficial.
I don't, I'll speak first, if that's okay. I think as we get closer, we'll get a better understanding of what the public output is going to be, how many people are actually going to come out, what they're going to say. But I mean, until it gets out there on social media, until we, people start talking about it, I don't know if we're going to have to change a venue, you know, if we're going to have to get to middle school, or if this is big enough, so, maybe, right? I'd like to, how soon could we see the development agreements, we can start looking through it and get some idea of what we're, what they're asking for?
I wanted to make sure it was a complete application, and everything was there, but then we can post the base camp, and you guys can log on and look at it there.
Okay.
We can send you all invitations there, and see if you can look. It's a large document, so you can mail it. Base camp is our online resource to look at.
That's a great idea, I hadn't thought about that. Because you can just invite whoever, they don't have to have full access. Cool.
So a work session, are you taking, and we'll let the public come and listen to us, or are we just, I mean, I'm confused, how you work on that.
Sure, no. The thought process we had was that we could present, here's the application, here's the process and requirements that the county has, and then here's what the application has submitted, and allow people to interact. You know, the app, the, our consultant's going to put together a website for this, for the, for the review part of it. So, and allow people to ask questions and see things there, but we also wanted to have a meeting to discuss it with you mainly, maybe invite county council to sit and listen as well, and then.
A review website instead of Morgan Moms.
Anyway.
A little more official, gotcha.
So, yeah. The app can, has their website, wprdevco.com, where they posted the boards that they had at the public open house. But we wanted to, we'll have more material available for the public to look at, but it takes time to make sure everything's complete, get that online. But that's the direction we'd like to go, with online, and then have the work session as an opportunity.
Well, what comes from, I never got in on the phone call, what was the outcome from the open house? Response from everybody?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I thought it was a good open house, there was a lot of people there, I counted, I think, 115. So there's a substantial number of people there, and they just kind of got general information, pretty high level, but they did show the concept plan, and I think the biggest concern was about water. You know, if they have rights to 2,000 acre feet, 2,000, yeah, I think 2,000 acre feet, the development as proposed is at 1,400, so, you know, they look like they should be okay. You know, that's all, that's part of the review process, is examining that, but, but anyway, so I thought the open house was good. Debbie was there, maybe else make it?
Shane was there.
Oh, you were there. Well, yeah, would you?
I was just curious what others had said, because I heard a lot of concerns about that, and then also the taxes. Is a major concern. I was just curious, what, anybody else just?
I haven't heard anything after that, I think, just kind of the initial discussion went out there, and I guess we'll just have to wait and see what happens when we actually start moving towards public hearing on it.
There's a lot of people to come.
What do you, what do you think, what's the timeframe for that, then? If they, if they want to be here to make application, June, July timeframe, what would happen before that? What should we be doing to prepare for that, before they make application?
Well, they've made application. They made...
I meant before they plan on actually bringing it to the planning commission? Before the application is complete and they're ready to show up?
So they submit their application. The process is now for us to process.
Right.
So we are going to review it, allow 30 days for some outside referral agencies to review, a little bigger review, Division of Wildlife, Natural Resources, Water, Division of Drinking Water. We want those state agencies to weigh in. I don't know that they have anything to say or add, but we'd like their input. So review period and then putting together initial staff comments for the applicant to say, hey, here's some high-level stuff that we're seeing issues and we have questions on. And then give them a chance to respond and then we would have a final staff report. We're trying to work with and allow, because it's so complex and such a large development, allow the applicants a little more time to see the staff report and the concerns and then come to the planning commission and begin the official public hearing process. But we're doing a lot more review back and forth officially. Some of our developments just take that long anyway, but this is...
So lots of... Between now and then, just lots of feedback like this at our planning commission meetings? Which... I just want to make sure we're tracking.
I think what I would like to share with you next is here's staff's initial thoughts about the application and the applicant's response to those concerns.
Okay.
And I, you know, like infrastructure, there's a few questions that they have just in the initial review. The county engineer had several questions where he'd like a little more information. So he thinks that what they've got so far is really good, but he wants to go a little further. So it'll be things like that.
So is there any way when this comes about that we could get it a lot quicker than our meeting? I mean, usually you try and get it to us Thursday and then we have our meeting Thursday.
That's a good point.
I'm just thinking as big as this is that it might be wise to...
Well, that's part of the reason we want a work session, but yeah, that's a good point. We'll have to add in, give you a couple of weeks.
If we could have a little bit more time of preparation, I think might be beneficial.
I think you'll see initial review, referral agency comments, and staff comments.
Well, if you invite us to base camp, that's pretty much everything we're looking for. When... If you're invited to the project in base camp, every time Mark chimes in, you'll get an email saying there's been an update.
You'll see the applicant's response.
You'll see the applicant's response to it. So it's an easy way to track it.
It's a complex enough thing that we're going to want to be prepared on this one or we can get in trouble.
Well, you need to have time to review the final staff report and summary of all these things more than four days.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, I think it would help.
That's a good point. It's a good heads up.
That way we got time to talk if we need to have questions to have answered.
With staff.
With staff, yeah.
Can't talk to each other.
Correct. In a public meeting.
Can't talk to each other.
No.
As a group.
Yeah, unless we're in a public meeting and we're talking.
Oh, right, yeah, I can accept that. I just spent awful.
No, we wouldn't do that. Okay. Any other big things coming down?
Oh, and then...
That's me.
Well, we did news... I'm going to say it. Snow Basin yesterday, they're... They were asking what are the requirements to develop more than county. But they do not have any idea what they want to do or when they're going to do it. They don't know, but they're... They asked and that was significant. But I don't think of anything else that's major. We've got a lot of ordinances, several ordinances. We'll kind of get wrapped up and...
Do we still have that list of things or to-do list of ordinances that we wanted to...
Pretty... Oh, yeah.
We may have to dust it off. Debbie brought up a couple of things tonight that maybe we want to add on there.
That's what I was hoping we had wanted to...
We've got a busy summer coming up, sounds like.
And another thing, the state legislature just passed the bill that updates the land use management code, the state one.
Did it pass or is it still in the Senate?
I think it passed. I'll verify. But it's going to be... It will require us to change our code to match them. They changed parcel boundary adjustment where we used to be able, the landowner, if they had two parcels, could shift the boundary back and forth. Now, you can only do that between separate parcel owners. You can't do it with yourself. I guess people are getting really creative, so... But there's a number of things, so we'll have to update our code to match the state code. So we can add that to our list.
Yeah, we have a long list.
A long list.
Yeah, a long list. In your spare time. Okay, great.
I feel like we're always saying like, oh, gee, so much to do, and that's absolutely true. But there's also a lot of things we're taking off and getting done. We've had a lot of applications and...
Yeah, there's been a steady stream of applications as well. I don't think there's anything urgent on our to-do list. We just want to stay productive throughout the season. Great. Thanks. Chris?
For minutes?
Already submitted?
But he's already given me his corrections.
Okay, I won't do any of the punctuation because I'm sure he picked up on those. The main one was on page two. The second paragraph down, it was Chair Ross asked if item J should be was. Said were even necessary. Like I say, the punctuation, I'm sure Chris picked up on, so I'm... Or any other item.
Is that it?
Yeah, that was... Yeah.
For the whole thing?
Yeah, I just... I skimmed over it and that was about the only thing that...
Okay. Glad to see you back, Chris.
Chris was thorough.
All right. Motion to approve the minutes has ended.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We should adjourn then.
I turned.
Were you not paying attention? Sir, you can watch the video later. If you missed it.
Debbie, I was really confused on that paragraph though because when he said member sessions stated that he could vote.
Well, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I was like... So...